All right. All right. Thank you, Brian, and thank you, everyone, for being here tonight for this December 20, 2021 meeting of the Homewood City Council. A couple of announcements, or at least one. The storm water management plan for the city is now on the Homewood website, and it will be there for public review and comment until January 31. So please go look at it, review it, give us any comments that you've got. You can do that through the website, again, through the month of January, and then we'll start to move on to the next steps. Ms. Andrus?
Yeah. So we're not going to talk about these exercises close. It's going to take them about 15 to 20 minutes to get here as they come along.
Yeah, that's fine. We're going to go in.
We'll move on.
Yeah, we'll do it when we come back because we're going to jump around a little bit tonight anyway. So, all right, so with that, we were going to have a check presentation a little bit later, but let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we'll start with an invocation from Ms. Salter. Everyone else stand.
I'm sorry, my voice is a little bit shot, but anyway, I just wanted to just give a Christmas prayer of hope. I found this. It says, "On this beautiful Christmas Day, Father, I pray particularly for those of us in search of hope who need a tender touch to find you so that we will know the true meaning of love and sharing. Reveal yourself to us, Father God. Touch our hearts in a special way. Show us how to rejoice and hope, to be patient in tribulation, and constant in prayer." And I hope that I'm saying this correctly, I wanted, since we did the menorah, I wanted to have something for our Jewish brothers and sisters, so hopefully this is okay. May your Hanukkah be filled with unexpected blessings. So, and Father, I pray for Homewood for this coming up year, for all of us, Father, that you just protect us, heal our land, help us make decisions tonight that will be the best for the people of Homewood and the best for you. In Jesus' precious name we pray, amen.
Thank you very much. Everyone will face the flag for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, number one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. Ms. Salter, if you'll call roll, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walton.
Here.
Counselor Gier.
Here.
Counselor Alamon. Counselor Wolverton. Counselor Sims.
Here.
Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Nelms.
Here.
Counselor Andrus.
Here.
Counselor Harden. And President Wyatt.
Here.
Okay, so you've got three absentee, still got a quorum.
Okay. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our regular council meeting of December 6, 2021. These have previously been distributed. I would entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading and approval of the same.
Seven seconds.
Motion by Mr. Walton, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero?
That's what I got.
Okay. It was passed eight to zero. We also have the reading of the minutes from the specially called meeting of December 13, 2021 that have also been distributed.
I would make a motion to approve, please, without reading.
Motion for Ms. Smith.
Second.
Second for Ms. Nelms.
I just have one comment. I had a notation in reply to Melody. Did you incorporate that, that one change, Melody?
Oh, the special call?
Yes.
I didn't reprint them, but I will before we post them. We will approve it with that change, and I will make sure that's added before we post them.
Thank you.
Okay.
So Ms. Smith and Ms. Nelms, I'm assuming your motion is second is conditional upon the change that Mr. Sims noted, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It also passes eight to zero. All right. Board vacancies. Ward force, board, abatement board closed already?
Yes.
All right.
We'd like to make a motion to appoint Dave Condon to this position based on him being the only applicant, so we will, we have talked with Dave, but not, you know, an official interview because he was the only applicant and met the standards that we needed for that board.
Okay. So we have a motion from Ms. Nelms, second from Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also eight to zero. Ms. Salter, if you will let Mr. Condon know.
I sure will.
We have one amendment to the agenda tonight. We have an item that is both on the committee referral agenda and the other new business that is 131221. The applicant has requested that we drop that item, so before we set a public hearing tonight and rather than sending it to committee, that item will go ahead and be dropped. So with that amendment, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Could we add a question?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. I completely forgot. So we do have one addition to, one other addition to the other new business. Ms. Salter, will that be 201221?
Let me go look, as we added some stuff in the agenda, it says we got order 16. Yes, it will be 20.
All right. So that, this item will be 2020, 201221, and it is request to authorize the mayor to sign?
It says cable TV franchise.
Okay.
It's back on the charter, on the charter.
And let me make sure that I'm doing this right. We're sending this to committee, so it'll be on the committee referral agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Where are we sending it to? Franchise, is that finance?
Yeah. It'll go to finance, since it's a.
Hey, I have a problem. Only one of the items from my committee that moved out of committee is on the agenda, and that's number 261121. It's on the old business agenda. Neither 211121 or 221121 are on the agenda for the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan and the memorandum of understanding.
I thought we did that one last time.
Oh, did we approve them at the last meeting?
Uh-uh.
Okay, okay.
Do we not give you the minutes for the 13?
Yes, you did. Okay, sorry. I was looking at the minutes from the 29. Okay, got it.
She gave you those in case you need them for something else.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Sometimes if you have something, it's got to record out, she'll give you the both of them.
All right. So just to recap, we are dropping 131221 from both the committee referral agenda and the other new business, and we are adding 201221 to the committee referral agenda, which deals with the cable franchise, and that'll go to the finance committee. So with those amendments, I would entertain a motion for approval of the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Jones, second for Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Wolverton is here now, so that is nine to zero.
Okay. Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. So before we get started with anything else, there's one item we are going to take out of order tonight. It is 14, it's from other new business. It's 141221, request to authorize the mayor to sign settlement agreement with one opioid manufacturer. This item came from myself. I would entertain a motion and a second to go into executive session to discuss this with our attorneys representing the city in the opioid litigation.
So moved.
Second. Motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Walton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that's nine to zero. I think this will probably take about 10 minutes, 15 at the most. Mr. Kendrick, do you need to tell us anything?
This is pending litigation.
Okay. All right. So with that, we'll head back there with our attorneys and.
Can you say 15 minutes, you think?
Yeah. 10 to 15 minutes.
All right. So we are back, and I would entertain a motion and a second to take us out of executive session, back in regular session.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Mr. Wolverton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero, which will bring us back to the item 141221, request to authorize the mayor to sign settlement agreement with one opioid manufacturer. And I would entertain a motion and a second with regard to that.
I would move to approve for the mayor to sign into settlement.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero, which will bring us back to the item 141221, request to authorize the mayor to sign settlement agreement with one opioid manufacturer. And I would entertain a motion and a second with regard to that.
I would move to approve for the mayor to sign into settlement.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero and will be resolution 21197. Thanks, guys. We appreciate it. All right. So now I'm going to move back because I believe we have Representative Faulkner here now. You timed this just right.
Hi, I'm the councillor and mayor. I usually am not dressed like this when I'm here. I'm usually from the council.
That's what I tell them.
As long as you remember the check.
Write a check.
I do have a check and for the restrooms, Counselor Andrus had approached us and maybe some others of you on the council and the mayor about putting HVAC in the restrooms out at the park. And so I teamed up with Senator Jabbo Wagner, and we have gotten those funds, and we also have some funds for another project, on the Highway 280 Bridge project, but this was kind of a team effort, so I have one check for those restrooms, for the HVAC for those restrooms. And certainly, if this amount doesn't do it, we will be glad to go back and get the rest. I thought I dressed like I was at the park and using the restroom.
Perfect.
Well, I would love, I would love for Stephanie and Russell to come up in Berkeley, come up and accept, and I'm going to picture.
Again, my apologies for sports attire.
You're good. Way stuff. Way stuff. And y'all, the thing, like, the sun hits those restrooms, and y'all, it is the surface of the sun. I mean, it is so hot there. So really appreciate everything that Stephanie and Russell have done for the program, y'all at West Homewood. It is exploding, and it was all due to the heat or so. Do you want me to do, do you want me to do my stuff or?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be nice. That'd be nice.
I don't know, they're pretty good.
Standard protocol, isn't it?
You gotta squeeze in a little bit.
I need to do the side when I make it look thinner.
Yeah, Berkeley squeeze in a little bit so I can get, I'm so sorry, let's squeeze yeah, because I gotta.
Berkeley squeeze in there.
There we go. There we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, both. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Representative Faulkner. We appreciate it. All right. So we're, we'll get back to sort of the normal agenda now. We'll start with the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Seven seconds.
Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero, approved. Which brings us to the old business agenda, the first item 011121, a bid opening set for tonight at 4:31 for mowing landscaping of state right-of-way areas in Homewood, brought to us by Berkeley Squires. And we'll start with a report from finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The finance committee met on December 13 and voted, it was four to zero to send it out without recommendation pending the bid opening today, so we had the bid opening. There were three bidders for that, and I was going to have Mr. Squires provide a recommendation for that item.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. We are recommending, we had, as Dr. Jones reported, we had three, and Thrive Outdoor Incorporated was the low responsible bidder at $248,994, which is roughly equivalent to $82,998 a year, and we have that budgeted in our upcoming year budget to cover, and so I would recommend council voting for Thrive Outdoor Incorporated on a three-year deal.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Squires. Yeah, Mr. Jones.
So, Mr. President, I would, I would move from the floor since that finance didn't have this, but I would move from the floor to approve Thrive Outdoor Incorporated. It's the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for a three-year agreement at $248,994.
All right.
So we have a motion from Mr. Jones, a second from Ms. Smith. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero and will be resolution 21198. Next item is 261121, a public hearing set for tonight for consideration of offense setback variance on a lot with two front yards to reduce the required setback from 15 feet to zero feet at 3101 Roxbury Road, brought to us by the homeowner Joey Miller and YFPU of our inspections and permits department. And we will start with a report from special issues. Ms. Smith.
The committee met and voted five to zero to refer this item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. The motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right. Thank you very much. So with that, I will open this public hearing and ask if there's anyone to speak for or against this item.
Do you mind signing the answer? You're just signing soon.
Sure. I'm Brian Neal. I'm representing Father Nature Landscapes, representing Mr. Miller. And we are the ones that he's spoken to about building the fence, so.
And I think we've got, this is the fence up on the screen, correct?
That's the existing one, yes.
And as I recall, this is essentially the replacement of a fence that was already there.
That's the one that's already there that we're going to take down and replace it with a new one, so yeah, it would go back in the exact same spot. That fence is six feet tall, and we're wanting to make it eight feet.
Okay. All right. Anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I would move to approve.
We have a motion from Ms. Smith.
Second.
Second from Ms. Andrus. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved nine to zero and will be resolution 21199. Thank you very much. All right. Next item, 061221, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of assigned variance at 181129th Avenue South, brought to us by Preston Foy of Wallace Burke Fine Jewelry and YFPU of our building department. And we'll start with another report from special issues. Ms. Smith.
Yes. Committee met last week and voted five to zero to further this item out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Ms. Andrus and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right. So with that, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item.
Didn't bring a check like that other guy.
It's the way to do it.
I can't run back to my, real quick.
Deny, deny.
Deny, deny.
If you will, just sign in there. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I don't know if I have any visuals here. There they go. And this is my partner.
You all had asked me to bring my calculation of the sign itself, and Brian, if you could scoot that over a little bit to where I could see to the, yeah, well, there you go, to the bottom. It's a 50-foot width on the storefront. The ordinance allows three square feet per one linear feet of storefront width, up to 90 feet. I'm sorry, up to 90% of the storefront width. So 90% of 50 feet is 45 feet, multiplied times three, 135 square feet is the maximum allowable sign area. The actual proposed area is 33 square feet, 11 by 3. So it's well within allowable area. It's just, it's got that one logo in the center that exceeds the height.
So that, again, we went back to that again. So in the middle, the part that has the initials in it, the logo, which is the logo for the store, that is just that one round part. It just extends over what the acceptable height is for that, but otherwise.
A little bit on the bottom, a little bit on the top.
Right. But otherwise, the sign itself, excluding that one, those little pieces at the top and the bottom, fit into, well within the allowed area.
Yes. The whole, the whole sign itself, as you can see, I drew a little dotted line around, and I included the height, I went to the height of the logo.
Yeah.
So I sort of included a slightly enlarged rectangle there. So it's, it's still, it's still, area-wise, it's fine.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any more questions or comments from council. And if not, I'd entertain a motion.
I would move to approve. Second, sorry.
Motion for Ms. Smith, second for Ms. Andrus. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero and will be resolution 21200. Thank you very much.
Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
All right. Next item, 021121, request for consideration of budget amendments to the fiscal year 2122 budget, brought to us by Robert Brigette, our finance director, and Melody Salter, our city clerk. And we'll start with a report, a report from finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The finance committee met, voted four to zero to recommend approval of these budget amendments. There were several other items that we covered, but overall, four to zero to approve.
All right. So we have a motion from finance. Any questions or comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also nine to zero and will be 21201. All right. Next item, 051121, request to set a bid opening date and authorize the mayor to sign a contract for two storm water pipe rehabilitation projects, one at La Prado Place and one at Park Ridge, brought to us by Cale Smith, our city engineer. And we'll start with a report from finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The finance committee met, voted four to zero to recommend setting the bid opening date for January 24, 2022, at 4:45 PM. The bids will be due at 4:30 PM that day, so four to zero from finance.
Okay. And, Mr. Kendrick, we don't need a resolution on this, correct?
No, not set, Bill.
Okay. All right. But we'll go ahead and vote since finance made a motion. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero, so those bids are, bid openings are now set. All right. Next item, 041221, request for consideration of amending the zoning ordinance to include the fence regulations, brought to us by Counselor Alamon. And start with a report from special issues. Ms. Smith.
Yes. Committee met last week, voted five to zero to refer this item over to the planning commission for them to investigate that, and the motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Counselor Sims.
Okay.
Was it four to zero or five to zero?
It was five to zero.
Five to zero.
All right. So this item, what this is, just so everyone understands, this item is about sending it to the planning commission for them to work on this, and if they, depending on what they come up with, they'll send it back to us for consideration at that point. Any questions or comments from anybody? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero, and we will refer that to the planning commission. All right. Next item, 051221, request for consideration of amending the zoning ordinance to include the sign regulations, also brought to us by Counselor Alamon. And another report from special issues. Ms. Smith.
Yes, very similar to the previous one. The committee met last week, voted five to zero to further this item to the planning commission. Motion was made by, again, Mr. Alamon and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right. Same thing with this one. Any questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Jones.
And I apologize, I had to miss this particular part of the meeting, but I'm fully in support of this, and as I've been talking about this for a long time, being strategic here is important to me, and I think this will allow us to do that. So thank you for allowing me to share my comments on that, so.
Absolutely. I know this is one that you hold near and dear.
Yes, that's a good way to put it.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also nine to zero, and that item will be referred to planning commission. All right. And that brings us to the committee referral agenda. We made our two amendments earlier, so I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended committee referral agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walton, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved nine to zero, which brings us to other new business. First item, 121221, request to set a public hearing for consideration of three signed variances at 172427th Court South, brought to us by Ferris Malki at Cabo Cycle and YFPU of our building department. We will set that public hearing for our next meeting, which is January 10, 2021, at 6 PM. 22, thank you. Wow. Yeah. We're going to set the public hearing for January 10, 2022, at 6 PM. I mean, we're not going to count how many times I make that mistake over the next few weeks. Next item, 151221, request for consideration of approval of vouchers, vouchers for the period of December 7, 2021 through December 20, 2021, brought to us by Robert Brigette, our finance director, and Melody Salter, our city clerk. Mr. Jones, I believe this is still you?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the vouchers were all in order. I had several questions, but all were answered, so I would move for approval.
All right.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Jones, second from Ms. Smith. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is nine to zero, and that will be.
198?
No.
198?
Nah, 202.
I didn't think it.
It's because we took that one out of order.
Okay.
All right, so that'll be resolution 21-202. All right, next item, 17-12-21, request to change January council and committee meetings due to Martin Luther King Day, brought to the council by myself. So we have, fortunately have five Mondays in January. So what we will do is we will have committees on the 3rd and the 24th, and we will have council on the 10th and the Any questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Sims.
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also nine to zero and will be 21-203. All right, next item, 18-12-21, request to authorize the mayor to sign, it says a contract, but it's actually a service agreement with Nextiva from the state bid list for voice over internet protocol phone service, brought to us by Robert Brigette, our finance director, and Melody Salter, our city clerk. I'll let Robert speak to this in just a second. I just wanted everyone to understand, this didn't go to committee because, quite frankly, it came up and there was urgency to get it done before the end of the year. And with this being the last meeting, we wanted to make sure we got it done. And quite frankly, it's good news, so we were excited about it. Mr. Brigette, do you want to explain?
Yes, sir, we're currently not under a contract, but a month-to-month agreement with Serium that we entered in in March of 18, that expired in March of 21. And we're on a month-to-month. And when James H. retired, this is something that he said needed to be addressed. We've been looking at different companies and, basically, to kind of cut some of the clutter out of it, I spoke with the mayor about, we should just take what we can get off the state bid, as opposed to getting RFPs or looking at these other companies. And David Gray with Rogue IT, I spoke with him, we, he were familiar with this company. He has done work with the city before and, and currently is doing work with the city. And Nextiva was his recommendation. It is a company that, that he partners with, and they are on the state bid list. And they're going to provide new equipment, they're going to provide all the necessary hardware and software to put us under their voice internet phone system. And it's, it's at a savings to what we're currently paying with Serium. There's a few, it takes, it's been about a three-week transition from our current phone system to the new phone system. And each individual phone will be out of service for about 10 minutes, is all that it will be. So it'll be a good transition.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we, we've been talking about it. And I appreciate the creativity from our finance department to look at that. It, when I was reviewing the invoices, seeing those bills was just kind of blowing my mind. So I'm really appreciative that we, we found an option. And I think we're, we're going to be in good shape with, with this recommendation.
I would agree. This is a significant savings. I appreciate, Mr. Brigette, your work on getting this before us. All right, any, any other questions or comments from council? Were you raising your hand or you just?
Oh, no.
Sorry.
I'll put that down.
I'll move to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Jones.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also nine to zero and will be 21-204. All right, next item, 19-12-21, request to authorize the mayor to sign, again, a service agreement with AT&amp;T from the state bid list for voice over internet protocol phone service, again, brought to us by Robert Brigette, our finance director, and Melody Salter, our city clerk. This is a similar item. Mr. Brigette, can you, is there anything different to explain with this one?
Basically, yeah, I learned a whole lot of new words when I was looking at all this stuff. It, it really is eye-opening. This is a similar situation where with Serium currently, we have four separate contracts with, with AC&amp;C, which is a division of AT&amp;T. And we were going through a third-party biller. Well, we're going directly with AT&amp;T, and really, the way we're getting out, not getting out of, but AT&amp;T is canceling the contract with the third-party biller, and they're going to be billing us directly. And we're going to be saving about, about 65% on our internet service, while at the same time, we're doubling our broadband speed, which we're going to be needing as we're moving more of our software into the cloud. So it's, it's going to be direct service with AT&amp;T, saving a substantial amount of money, and at the same time, doubling our service. Again, no contractors required, it's off the state bid. And what I like about doing this is, you know, Brandon Broadhead and I spoke about this, this is the company that he has the E911 service with, internet service with. And we're consolidating our, the companies we're doing business with, which we need to be looking at. But we're also going to have the ability to have redundant internet. If our internet goes out now, we're out. In the future, we're going to have service going into the police, the public safety building, and to City Hall with a switch. So if we lose service on one end, we'll have service on the other end. So we hopefully won't be without internet service at any point going forward. He has the same feature that he has with the E911 service, so he's never without the, the voice, the, the voice phone service, and you have a redundant line coming in. So it should be really beneficial for us. And we're going from, you know, something like $12,000 down to $3,867 a month on this.
Yeah, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Brigette, would, would this line item need to say for broadband service?
No, sir, it's, it's just our internet.
Still under voice over IP?
Well, now, the, the first one was voice over IP.
Yeah, they're both.
Void. The second is internet.
Is internet, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, it does say void, doesn't it?
Yeah, it would need to say.
That is correct. It is for broadband internet.
Broadband internet.
Let me, I'm sorry.
I would move to approve that, the mayor to sign the contract for broadband internet.
And I would, I would second that. And I would also just like to echo Walters' comments that, we so appreciate you, Robert and Melody, doing all of that. Because I know it was not simple when you have other stuff you've got to do as well. But we really do appreciate y'all, not only doing it, but doing it well and saving us money. So thank y'all.
Well, thank you much. And I also want to, you know, Brandon helped with this, and also we had Justin and Reggie both, both had their fingers in this too. Because to be quite honest, when you get into a lot of this, it's, the terminology's out of my league. I just looked at the cost.
All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Jones and a second for Ms. Smith. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero as well, and will be 21-205. All right, which brings us to the end of our agenda for tonight. Mr. Mayor?
You will have to forgive me, this changed from 70-degree weather to 40, back to 70, and everything else has just messed with my head. So I apologize if I sound a little different than I normally do. Again, Robert, thank you so very much, you and Melody. I know it's been tough on you guys since James passing and trying to figure out the whole IT department with everything else you guys have going on. But I think we're going to have, have some, somebody in here to help you guys pretty soon. But again, thank you and Melody and Brandon, Justin, and Reggie for getting this done. This is a significant savings to the city, and the quality of service is not going to be hindered whatsoever. So we, we certainly appreciate that. And I do want to thank every one of you guys that's up here. It's been, it's been a year. It's been another year. 21's been fun. You guys have done a fantastic job. I know some of you guys are just kind of getting your feet wet a little bit. Maybe, maybe you understand things more now than you did a year ago. But I really do appreciate the hard work and everything that you guys do. Because outside of this building, there's, there's not a lot of thanks that come your way. So I want you to know that we certainly thank you for everything that you do. Not only for our department heads and our staff, we thank them as well. It's, it's, it's been rough, but it's been good. I think we have great things that are going on in the city. I think we're looking forward to a fantastic 2022. I think we have a lot of things that are going to be going on. I look forward to my next State of the City, which will be in roughly a month. This one's live.
[laughing]
So be, be a little bit different, but that's good. But I just want to wish you guys a very, very Merry Christmas. And I hope you enjoy time off from not only this, but from work and enjoy time with your family. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gualtney?
Well, first, Councilor Jones, how long do you need for finance?
We really need about 15 minutes.
15 minutes, all right. I will set public safety for 15 minutes at 5:15. I don't have a lot to add. The only comment that I would make was, you know, we can't let you give all the praise to others around us. Thank you and JJ and all of your department heads. I know you walked into some unique challenges in the last year, and I know that the city is in a much better place with your leadership. You know, thank you for everything you do. Every day I see JJ out helping every, you know, everybody in the city is responsive to the needs of the citizens. So I appreciate that because it makes my job easier, but it also makes us look good as a team out there responding to what our neighbors need. With that, everybody, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gier?
Just thanks to whoever left all these goodies in my chair when I arrived today. I really appreciate it. Haven't had a chance to look through all the cards. But I know we have a lot of awesome providers of service in the city, and I really do appreciate everything that they do. I'd also like to just say happy holidays and safe travels to all who are traveling. See you in the new year.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wolverton?
Just want to echo what everybody else has said. There's, there's a lot that the city does and a lot of things that have not been normal or routine. But I'm thankful that we're working towards trying to get some of those things back, you know, with, starting with the Christmas parade and appreciated that event. And just want to say Merry Christmas to everybody and hopefully everybody has a great couple of weeks. I guess it'll be three weeks before we're back, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sims?
Thank you. Yes, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as we head into the new calendar year, 2022. And also, just wanted to acknowledge my son, Charlie, today. This is actually the 15 years, the day that he came home with us when we adopted him. So it's, for some reason, this year, he's been talking about it a lot. So I think he just kind of understands it and it means more to him. And, and that's what I wish for all of y'all, you know, this Christmas is, you know, being with family and remember, remembering the ones who can't be there with you, but also just, you know, being together and having a time where, you know, you can celebrate, gather, and love on each other. So Merry Christmas, y'all. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Dr. Jones?
Yes, Finance at 5. And I'll, I'll add on to your comments about Charlie. Charlie and Winston have grown up together, big buddies. And the only thing that makes me sad now is that he is now taller than me.
[laughing]
And I am 6'3", and when I'm standing around him, I stand up really tall, but he's still taller than me. But I'm so, so happy for him. And, and I totally agree with that. I want to also thank Representative Faulkner for, for being a good partner. And you, you have always been so good to, to think about ways to help, help Homewood. And, and I really appreciate that. There, there are lots of other cities that don't have the representation that, that we do. And I just appreciate what you do for us. And then also just, I thought the parade was great this year. And it was a lot of fun to have everybody there, and it was a great success compared to standing there for three hours waving that we did last time. So that was great, and I love the, the theme. And so I hope everybody has a Merry Christmas.
Before I go to Ms. Smith, going back to Mr. Wolverton, you said in public work, how long, Mr. Gualtney, how long do you need?
15.
Okay.
Really, the only item I think we're waiting, waiting to hear back on is the right-of-way. Cale's gone already. So.
About the manhole on this new item?
I'm sorry.
You've got a new one.
There is a new one. Okay, we'll, we'll do 15.
Okay. All right, so public works for 5:30 for 15 minutes. Okay, now, Ms. Smith?
Asking that question, because that was going to be my first one.
No problem.
Okay, so, first off, I did want to thank both, both of the boards that I serve as liaison for. We had park board last week, or the week before, I can't keep it straight anymore. But just to drop a few numbers on y'all and to give y'all good reasons why we did all the expansion in the parks that we did, there are over 900 kids signed up to play basketball. Oh, my gosh. This year. There are 116 teams, and the largest number of first graders and kindergartners that they ever had. Wow. They are going to be using school courts at all the schools essentially, because even with our expanded courts, there's still not enough room for all of these kids. So.
If you want to see chaos, kindergarten, first grade.
Yeah. So, so it was a wise investment for us to expand our park facilities, because I'm assuming that we're going to see these same kind of numbers for flag football and baseball and softball and all, and lacrosse and all the other sports that we have going all the time. Wrestling, I think wrestling this year was a big program. So just know that that was a very wise investment on our part. And I would like to thank the members of the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission. Those folks work so hard and so tirelessly with such pure intentions to help the city and the people in the city. And I just want to recognize them. I want to recognize all of them for their hard work and their, their efforts this year, because I think sometimes they take criticism that is undeserved. And I would just like to thank them for all of their good works. And I'm proud to, to be their liaison. I would set special issues for 5:45. And I think because we have both of the, I'm, I'm looking to do the same thing with the Historic Preservation Commission that Nick did with the Beautification Board. And we also have the memorial policy to talk about. And I think by then, Berkeley should have me all the other information that we need. So I'm going to go ahead and say 30 minutes, so till 6:15. And, okay, oh, yeah, and then in the Homewood High School Band is going to be going to the Rose Parade. So tune in on January 1 to NBC. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just making that up.
[laughing] Every channel, it's coming on every channel.
Oh, yes, they are the kickoff band for the Rose Parade. So they will be the very first marching band to perform. So tune in to watch them. And I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday and gets to celebrate and have some downtime.
So tune in early.
Tune in early, yes.
If you tune in late, you're going to miss it.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Nelms?
Yes, I would like to say Merry Christmas and to echo the sentiments about Homewood's band. They are absolutely amazing with or without my children in the band. I mean, amazing.
More amazing with your children in.
It, it's a different experience, getting, getting to see another member of my four girls to participate in the band. And this is the second time I have a daughter performing as a star spangled girl in the Pasadena Parade, which is amazing.
That's amazing.
Yes, and I can't wait to be there. I hope you guys will be watching, again, watch at the beginning.
Right.
Before it even starts. Yeah. And Merry Christmas, everybody. Grateful for the service and the direction you guys have given me this past year. Even my new, that four members, you know, the new ones who joined with us, I've gotten a lot of good direction from them as well. And from Robert, our city, Berkeley, everyone, I appreciate it. JJ, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nelms. Ms. Andrus?
Well, I do not need to set P&amp;Ds as that item drops, so I will not set that. But I do want to say again, thank you to Representative Faulkner. Last week, Councilor Smith was sitting next to me as I started opening up check after check after check. Thank you for the bridge project. And we should be able to have some design to share with everybody after the first of the year. Y'all, it's, it's a game changer. I mean, it's an absolute game changer. We have a light coming off of Highway 280. We have a turn lane coming onto Highway 280. We have protected pedestrian access on the north side. And now we are looking at a decorative element to it to make a statement, because it is a regional project, and it has been so successful. And Representative Faulkner has been involved. I was elected in 2016. I've been involved since 2012. I was elected in 2016. You were elected in 20...
2014.
Okay, but before I was even on, we met before I was even sworn in on the council. And that's how long you've been working on that. So that was five and a half years ago. And he's been a huge, huge part of helping get support in Montgomery with this and with our Jefferson County delegation. So last week, I opened up a check from Senator Dan, Dan Roberts, from Representative Faulkner, from Senator Jabbo Wagner, and from Representative John Rogers. So, you know, it was really great to see everybody participate. And I know Senator Smithman will be participating as well. And then, of course, our county commissioner, Steve Ammons. So I can't wait to share, share with everybody the drawings. Like I said, it's just going to be, just a game changer. And we are still on schedule to go out to bid in August of 2022. And I will be meeting with the Hollywood Garden Club tomorrow night to share with them. And they will be presenting a check for $11,000. So really, just exciting stuff happening. So I want to thank Representative Faulkner for all that he has done for that. Last week, Andy and I hosted the Jefferson County Council Coalition, JC3. And thank you to the mayor for supporting us with that and letting us meet here and helping us with lunch and everything. And we had representatives from Bessemer, Huey Town, Fairfield, Trussville, Mountain Brook, Homewood, Vestavia, Hoover, and our county commissioner, Steve Ammons, and the folks from the Community Foundation of Greater Birmingham. And they helped us sort of do what the Mayor's Association does, which is spend a very focused afternoon trying to dial down onto the issues that we wanted to focus on for 2022. And our groups came up with working on two projects that are time-sensitive. And one is expanding transportation and the micro-transportation in Jefferson County. So looking at VIA and how can expand it to all the region. And then also trail expansion. And so we heard some great thoughts on the folks from Huey Town and Fairfield, and how can we, how can we get everybody in the county with some sort of pedestrian access, trails, quality of life improvement, moving, if you build it, they will come. I just have a huge, I just really believe that. And so Hunter Williams from Birmingham and I are going to have lunch with, next week, with Carolyn Buck from the Freshwater Land Trust and get rolling on that. So we think, we mentioned time sensitivity, because we know we've got folks with ARPA funding that would help with this funding, as well as the World Games coming again. So those are our time-sensitive projects. So that's the update from there. Anything I missed on that, Andy?
Yep.
And that's all I got.
All right, thank you very much. I got a few things, but I'll start with the bridge, just because you just mentioned it and because Representative Faulkner's here, so I can tell you. But for those who have not been around that project, it, it is really almost impossible to talk about the achievement that this is, because it is, I mean, this thing has died, what, five, six, 50, 50, 60 times, and it has continually been... five, six, fifty, thirty, fifty, sixty times, and has continually been brought to life, back to life by the people who care about it, and as someone who was driving across that bridge about a week ago with some runners that, you know, were taking their lives into their own hands, and almost got hit a couple of times, it, it's an important project, but I just want to thank both of you, because it's, it's a, it's a big deal, and, and the work that's gone in to get to this point is just, like I said, hard to overstate. Couple of other things, first, just want to announce when the, when City Hall will be closed for the holidays, it will be closed this Friday, the twenty-fourth, next Monday, the twenty-seventh, and then for New Year's, it'll be closed on New Year's Eve Day, the thirty-first, but then it will be back open on the third, and I believe Melody is sending out that on Everbridge as well, so that everyone will be aware of it. Next, I've got some things that I wanted to pass along that some people may not know about. The first is, even though he's not here, is, is to give a shout-out to Councilor Alamon, he went to a swearing-in ceremony and actually swore in Melody and Robert for the Jefferson County Municipal Clerks Association, Melody is president, and Robert is president-elect, so first of all, congratulations to Melody and Robert, that is quite an accomplishment, and then, thank you again to Councilor Alamon for going to do that, I know that Melody and Robert both greatly appreciated it, and, and he did a fantastic job with that. Also, I wanted, I also thought the parade was just wonderful, it was great, and I want to thank the finance department and the City Clerk's Office for everything they did. According to Melody, she and Robert, not surprisingly, were tied up doing about, you know, a million and a half other things, and so their staff's really worked on that and worked hard and did a great job, I, I love Christmas Vacation, so that, that was a particular, particular point to me that, that that was the theme, so thank you to them, it really went above and beyond to get that together. All right, one other quick thing, or, or maybe it's more than one, just building on what everyone else has said, thank you to everyone up here for everything that you do, this really is a, it's a pretty difficult part-time job, or pseudo-volunteer job even, so, you know, we do it because we love Homewood, we do it because we, we care about our community and we're willing to put in the time. I would like to thank the mayor, I would agree with what Mr. Gualtney said, the number of things that you have done for the city over the past year is, is mind-boggling, and the, the city is, is in a much better place for it, and we appreciate all, all that you've done, we appreciate all the department has, particularly Robert and Melody, who we work so closely with, both of our chiefs, and Berkeley, who does everything for the city, anything that anyone needs, thank you to all the employees. One additional person that, that I'd really like to thank is Mr. Kendrick, it is, is not easy to be an attorney for a city, and to have, you know, at least twelve bosses that are, that are talking about any given issue that's coming up, and the work that you provide, and the, the service that you provide to the city is exemplary, I can say as an attorney that we have the best city attorney in the state of Alabama, and I am very happy about that, so I, we very much appreciate all of the work you do. Lastly, with regard to the council, like you said, the amount of work that everyone puts in is very much appreciated. My predecessor, Peter Wright, used to, has a favorite, I guess it's a quote from Teddy Roosevelt, that he used to read every so often, and given that it's the end of the year and time to reflect on this year and moving into another year, it's, he, he would, I actually never heard this quote before he did it, but, so, I'm going to, I'm going to read it very quickly, or maybe not so quickly, but because I think it's a good thing to reflect on at the end of the year and as we get recharged for a new year. Again, this is from Teddy Roosevelt, "Is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those who, with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." I, I think that really epitomizes what we do up here, and, and what we should all keep in mind as we move forward, I'm very proud of what we've done this year, and I look forward to doing it for another year with all of you. So, with that, I will end my long speech, and we will adjourn this meeting, and we will see everyone back in the New Year.